Eighteenth meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? And does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contracts coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the Commissioners at our meeting this evening. All right, I also wanted to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for any members of the public attending the meeting this evening. If you would like validation for that, please see one of the officers on your way out. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on our consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the understanding that the update from the Energy and Environment Group will be part of the County Manager's Report?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we come to public comment. The time limit for individuals to make comments to the Board of Commissioners is three minutes. And when you have about 30 seconds left, you're going to get an orange light, and when your time's up, you'll get a red light. We ask that you please discontinue your comments once your time's up because we want to give everyone an equal amount of time to address the Board. So we've got a sign-up sheet. I'm going to go through the list, and if anybody else wants to address the Board after I get through the list of folks who signed up, there'll be an opportunity to do that as well. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. The first person that signed up is Minion Durham. So come on up, and you can come to the podium and speak into the mic, please. Yes, yes, that's right. No problem. Thanks for being here.
I'm Minion Durham. I live at 33 Robinson Creek Road, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the county commissioners. I am here today to speak about a development process called Conservation, Easement, Hillside Development Subdivision Plan that must be stopped. Earlier this year, the Planning Board, by six to one vote, rejected the rezoning request for KLP Penner's Eat LLC, which would have allowed several hundred homes on 75 acres when it is currently zoned for only two homes per acre. And as we all know, with steep slope ordinances, the total number of houses would have been even significantly less. With such an overwhelming no vote from your Planning Board, the developer pulled the request from the County Commissioners' review, and now the developer is trying to force the issue with this submission of a major subdivision, 269 units, using the rules of Conservation, Easement, Hillside Development Subdivision, in which the density greatly overrides that of the current zoning, provided they create a perpetual conservation easement which removes the steep hillsides from the slope calculations. Furthermore, this process sidesteps review by your Planning Board, you yourselves, and it does not allow for public comment. Only this week did only the adjacent property owners receive notification of this process that has been underway for many months. Currently, there is no local land conservation organization willing to support this easement because in their judgment, there would be no realized public benefit. In other words, this is a sham and merely a process for increasing density in an area that simply cannot handle such density. If approved, this subdivision would create an unsafe and tragic environmental outcome in a very rural area with no current public water or sewer, road congestion already crippling the area every day, and frequent significant flooding of Robinson Creek. Almost weekly, semi-tractor trailers either slide or get stuck in the hairpin turns on Penner's Cove Road because they're following their GPS, which doesn't know what a tragic road Penner's Cove is. So we've got to stop this kind of traffic. When Penner's Cove is closed for three to five hours, it impacts everyone in the cove. Please eliminate this loophole. No subdivision of more than 11 homes should escape your review, your Planning Board review, and public comment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next person that signed up is Cassandra Wells.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I come on behalf of dual employees of the Asheville City Schools, and what I'm asking for is a living wage for bus drivers and teacher assistants, and I'm sorry, that's what a dual employee is. So I am a teacher assistant at Claxton Elementary, and I drive the school bus, and I'm a teacher assistant, and that does not, I don't get paid for the rest of the jobs that I do there. And so today, what I'm asking for is a living wage for bus drivers and teacher assistants as well as custodians. And so we have had, we have had this conversation with the Asheville City School, and we haven't gotten anywhere with it. And so I'm here today and hoping that you'll listen, and if you have any more questions or if you have questions, I'm at Claxton. My name is known, Cassandra Wells, and I would appreciate it if we could get something done about that. My colleagues are not here with me today because we were promised, we were promised overtime pay, but you can't get overtime pay unless you drive the bus in the morning, you do your job in the middle of the day, you drive the bus in the afternoon, and then you have to come back into work to get that time. So most of us get, they get off, excuse me, they get off at 4:30, and then they have to clock back in to receive the overtime pay. So that means they have to come in and work some more. And so I'm just asking that you, you all think about it. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the budget comes from you for Asheville City Schools, and so I'm just asking that you give us a living wage that we can, because as you can see, you know, gas is going up, food is going up, everything is going up but our paychecks. And so we would appreciate it if you would think about it, approve it, so we can do better. Because we don't, we love our job. We love what we do. We love driving the bus. We love taking care of the kids. And no matter what that looks like, whether we being somebody's parent, or we putting on the Band-Aid, we're being a nurse, or whether we dealing with some other kind of issue that some of us didn't go to school for, we, we love it. Because I am also a graduate of UNC Asheville, and so I have a degree, but I don't get paid as if I had a degree. And so I would appreciate it if you would keep us in mind when the budget comes, or look at it and see if we can get some kind, kind of incentive. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wells. Next person that signed up is Susan Van Ness.
Thank you for the opportunity to share some comments. Similar to Minion, I also live in the Penner's Cove area, and she's covered the highlights there. And in January, this was voted down by the Planning Board, six to one. But nothing's changed except that there's now going to be a conservation area that allows them to go ahead and do dense building without changing the zoning. Right now, there are approximately 250 address points in the Penner's Cove area. With this one subdivision, this will more than double the population without any of the infrastructure improvements that are required. This is not just the streets that are a problem, not just Penner's Cove, but Mills Gap and Sweeten Creek, but there's also the schools, the fire department, EMTs, and sheriff. None of this is really sized to support any growth of this type in this area, and this really does need to be shut down. Right now, the DOT may have a separate budget than the Buncombe County, but the two are not mutually exclusive topics. You have to have infrastructure that supports that amount of building that has the population growth. So I too would like to see this turned down as it was discussed in January. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jessica Caulfield.
Hello, and thank you for having us here. And I just wanted to say that last week, the Asheville Sister Cities Program received from the City of Asheville Mayor Manheimer a proclamation stating October is Asheville Sister Cities Month. And myself, the president of the organization, and Ken Nelson here, just want to encourage involvement from our county commissioners in upcoming events that will be happening that promote not just the city of Asheville, but the county itself and surrounding areas. We are an international organization based, representing the city of Asheville to help further understanding at all levels of the community on a continuing and long-term basis, pairing our communities directly, involving international relations, and rewarding exchanges with projects that benefit everyone involved. We have seven different sister cities that Asheville's partnered with globally, and in 2023, we will be receiving three delegations from our sister cities that we would invite you to participate in. I believe the last one was our Nigerian sister city of Ashogbo. They attended a county commissioners' meeting in 2018, I think, and was really well received. So we hope to, to have you partner with us some more, and I will cede my time to Ken Nelson.
Thank you, Jessica, and I really want to stress that Jessica has been nominated, actually, had been elected to the Sister Cities International Board, so we have a representative now on the national board, and we are traveling, in fact, I am headed to Mexico next week. Jessica's heading to South Africa. You know, we are representing the city and the county in a lot of different venues and trying to promote Asheville to the world. So it's an important organization. It has a lot of roots and does a lot of good culturally, educationally, commercially. We work on many levels with our sister cities. In fact, we're going down to Mexico as our project is working with Mayan women to promote small businesses raising bee, honey from indigenous bees and meliponoma bees?
Melipona bees.
So it's a great organization, and we look forward to working with, at the county.
And Rebecca kindly passed out our most recent newsletter that recaps our last, since January, events that have happened and events that are coming up. And I would like to take this time to invite all of you to attend in person our annual meeting on November the 6th at Highland Brewing's Barrel Room. We will be celebrating our 30th anniversary as an organization here in this area. So thank you.
Hey, thanks for all you do. Appreciate the invitations. Thanks for being here. All right, next is Mike Kennedy.
Good evening. My name is Mike Kennedy. I am the HOA president for Glen Merrill Subdivision, which is approximately 500 yards from the Penner's Cove development of which we're speaking. I'm not going to try to touch on some of the topics that have already been addressed, but I will speak to some of the things that are concerning me as both a parent, a homeowner, and a resident of Penner's Cove. Roughly, it takes me 15 minutes to go from my home to the end of the road, and that's approximately three-quarters of a mile. So why does it take me 15 minutes? Because of traffic, current traffic. And as it was pointed out earlier, there are only 250 homes on the property now. My subdivision is 18 homes, which is typical. The new one's going to be 269 homes, which again, as it was said, it would double the capacity or the number of homes on our road. That's a major concern. I also have three children that are going to be of driving age very soon, one already did driving. It worries me. Trying to get out of our road, which has no stoplight, no turn lanes per se, so one egress, and that's it. So that's why it takes me 15 minutes. Some of the other things I'd like to speak to is the breakdown of the roads. The roads are poorly maintained in this area, and again, we know the classification of these roads, based on the number of homes, is probably low down on the scale. We know that because of snowplow. We're the last to get plowed, which is understandable. There are not that many homes. Now we're going to double the size, or more than double. Are they going to repair the roads before they put this subdivision in? We know that we can't stop this. Growth is, it's going to happen, but controlled growth is what we're looking for. The egress is out of our neighborhood. There's two ways to go. You either go out of Penner's Cove or you go out School Road. That's the only way we can go. And they all lead back to one main road, right? Mills Gap. And they're all crowded, so it's a real issue for us. Also, the flooding at the bridge. I don't know when the last time the bridge was repaired, but being an engineer, I've looked at the bridge, and it's, it's substandard in my mind. Probably not in the state's mind, but if you've gone around and looked at it, it's been washed out. So those are concerns. Another concern is how would this conservation be handled? I know there's a, it was passed to me that there's a $30 million open space bond. Is that money going to be afforded onto the conservation? As we said earlier, nobody's taken up this conservation. None of the people that they reached out to to take it over has agreed to it. So is the county going to manage that? And again, the last thing, and I know I only have a few seconds. I hope you guys will take a long look at this and don't let the, the Planning Boards be circumvented. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming, coming out. Last person that signed up is Bill Grunwald.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here also to speak to the Penner's Cove High Density Development and their proposal to build 269 homes in our rural community that lacks the adequate infrastructure to support this type of development. And their use of the Conservation, Easement, Hillside Development Subdivision rules that are trying, they are trying to use should not be applicable in this case. My wife and I moved to this area because it was rural. That's, we want to live in a rural area. And this is just going to change the whole, the whole feel of our community. And as others have mentioned, there are only a few ways out. There's up over the mountain, which is often blocked, and it's not, you know, in inclement weather, you can't get through that way. And the bridge, as was mentioned, all the impervious surface added when they do this, it's already flooding, and it will flood. I just would ask that the county commissioners look at the validity of this, and that all major subdivisions currently defined as anything over 11 units must require Planning Board, public comment, and county commission approval, not just slipping it through, essentially the same thing that was voted down. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming out. And that's everyone that signed up. Are there any other members of the public you would like to address the Board during public comment? Okay. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda, under Good News, is the I Voted sticker contest. And I think we have some folks from Election Services who are here to explain this item. So thank you for being with us.
Evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Election Services, Buncombe County Election Services recently held a contest for young people to design our next I Voted sticker for the 2022 general election. The community was allowed to vote for the four finalists, and so our four finalists that were selected were Polly Crutchfield, Cressida Cogburn, Boone Bowman, and Sebastian Weber. And we have certificates of achievement for them. We are very excited that one of our future voters was selected for this design art project. So if, I believe Boone and Sebastian could not be with us tonight, but if Cressida Cogburn and Polly Crutchfield, Cressida, excuse me, my name is as bad to pronounce also, could come up front, we'll give you your certificates. And Polly Crutchfield was our winner.
All right.
And you will be able, you will, you will get an I Voted sticker when you go vote, starting Thursday at early voting.
Commissioners, I saw an interview on TV with Polly, and she represented so well. I would love for her to say a few words tonight, if she doesn't mind.
I made this sticker because I know that there have been some difficulties with, in the past, about different colors of skin and all these different colors. And so I made this because I thought that the people are holding hands because everything, I mean, I just wanted to say that things work, most things work better together, and yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And it's, it's, it's a great drawing, so thank you, thank you for letting us use it for all the voters in Buncombe County after they go vote. So thank you so much, and thanks for being here. Congratulations. All right. The next item we have on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards will read the proclamation for us. And Paulina Mendez from Justice Services is here, along with others, to help us out with this. Thanks for being here, everyone.
Paulina and April, thank you for joining us. I'm going to read the proclamation. Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence, which can include physical, mental, sexual, emotional, and financial abuse, is a means of intimidation and violence to influence and control a partner involved in an intimate relationship. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately one in four women and nearly one in 10 men experienced some form of partner, intimate partner violence, including sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking during their lifetime. And nearly half of transgender and non-binary people experience intimate partner violence. And whereas, domestic violence survivors in rural areas, those who struggle socio-economically, those who are immigrants, and those who are members of racial and ethnic minority groups, and those who are members of the LGBTQIA2S+ community continue to be among the most affected. And whereas, domestic violence accounts for 21%, and intimate partner violence accounts for 15% of all violent crime in the United States. And these crimes are under-reported or not reported at all. Whereas, domestic violence is a serious public health issue that results in billions of dollars spent annually in medical, mental health, and lost work productivity costs. And whereas, throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, domestic violence survivors experienced increased isolation from support services, reduced capacity of crisis centers, increased symptoms of mental health conditions and financial stress, and the impacts of limited protections, displacement, and/or the need to rely on abusers for physical and financial survival were also heightened by the pandemic. And whereas, Buncombe County recognizes domestic violence is not just a singular niche problem, but instead, a large-scale issue that impacts individuals, families, children, schools, places of work, housing, mental health, substance abuse, and our military and veteran communities. And whereas, we know there is hope, and partners at the Buncombe County Family Justice Center collaborate to offer a safe location for survivors of domestic violence, to receive forensic medical exams, assistance creating safety plans, case management, counseling, and legal support in one location. And the Buncombe County Family Justice Center served 2,289 survivors in fiscal year 2022. And whereas, by working together, we can raise awareness, educate, and create healthier community norms to break the cycle of violence in order to build safer communities for all. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 22 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Buncombe County, and urge all our community members, including our youth, to join us in making the commitment to be, to create a safe environment for all by speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions and standing up against violence. Adopted this 18th day of October 2022 and signed by Chairman Brownie Newman. Thank you both for the work that you do in this arena. Oftentimes, we know that the work that you are doing are saving lives, and we are so grateful to each of you and your organizations.
I just wanted to say thank you to the commission and the county leadership. HelpMate serves 3,600 survivors of domestic violence every single year, and these kind of gestures, they really do matter. It matters that the community knows, that survivors in our community know that our county leadership cares about them, recognizes their struggle, and works to find solutions to this problem. So thank you very much for this, for this proclamation and for your ongoing support of survivors.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all for being, for being with us, for this proclamation. Thank you so much. All right. We do not have any public hearings this evening, and so the next item is the County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Commissioner. As has been our practice since we adopted a comprehensive strategic plan, we do bring forward every focus area every quarter to show you where we are in our progress. And this quarter is the environmental focus area. It came over from brief, and so we'll add it now, and then we'll move into storm preparedness.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I thought we were still in the afternoon. Raphael Baptiste, Strategy Innovation Director for the County, thank you for the opportunity to move our agenda item tonight, so you all had the time to have the discussion seated this afternoon. As you recall, every two months, we bring a strategic plan focus area to give you an update on how we're doing the strategic plan. Today, you'll be hearing from Jeremiah Leroy and Jennifer Harrison about environmental energy stewardship. And then in about two months, you'll be hearing from our And then in about two months, you'll be hearing from our resident well-being group. And after that, you'll hear from our Educating and Capable group. I will note that our online, public-facing dashboard at the moment is down. So if you do look on there, the information will not be up to date due to some technical glitches that we're having with our vendor. So the information in the presentation is the information of record for the moment. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. Thanks for having us and giving us the opportunity to give you an update on how we're proceeding with the strategic plan for the Energy and Environment stewardship. So as you may recall, last year, I believe it was around June or July, you decided to create a subcommittee to help address this strategic plan focus group. And as you can see here, the mission, the basic idea is to help us give guidance around some of the items such as renewable energy transition and our conservation easement work, as well as solid waste issues and air quality and water quality. So the group has been meeting since July of 2021. And just to remind you that the committee is made up of Commissioner Sloan as the chair, Chairman Newman, and Commissioner Wells, as well as four members from the public, Jamie Agar, Maggie Allman, Meg Jamison, and Lena Hansen. So the group meets once a month. And so far, they've brought four items to your attention to recommend. We did the vehicle, the fleet vehicle resolution. We decided to put a mandate or a order, I don't know what you call it, a mandate, resolution to put solar on schools by 2025. We supported the open space bond and decided to set a goal around conservation at 20% of Buncombe County. The subcommittee has also put together a list of priorities. So the items that they would like to work on. Working on water quality right now. We continue the renewable energy transition. We discuss that frequently as there's lots of opportunity here in the county. We've done the open space goal, and we continue to work on that. All of these encompass climate resiliency. But there will be more coming out of the comp plan to directly speak to climate resiliency. And then clean energy financing is exactly what it sounds like. We're extremely interested in having Buncombe County increase our clean energy production and looking at ways to make that affordable or make that possible to businesses. So that's the update on our subcommittee. Now the strategic plan goals. We have two under this focus area. We have the preserve farmland and environmentally sensitive tracts, and we have the reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So I will speak to you on the first, and Jeremiah will take care of the second. So here's a quick snapshot of how we've been doing. You can see since 2021, fiscal year 2021, we conserved 240 acres roughly in that fiscal year. We jumped up significantly in fiscal year 2022, and there's a direct correlation there. The funding for conservation easements coming out of the general fund in 2021 was about $240,000. In 2022, $750,000. And you can see we were able to do significantly more work with those added funds, as well as you gave us an extra person to work on it. So it was fantastic. And for this year, we're already at almost 680 acres, only a few months into the fiscal year. Our goal to reach that 20% by 2020 is about 760 acres a year. So so far, we're on track to meet that goal. And then the second graph is just to show you where we are on that 20%. We have a little over 5,300 acres left to go by 2030. And then I just wanted to share with you the story of one of the farms that has benefited from our conservation easement work. That's Jasperwood Farm. And Jasperwood is a century farm, which I think most of you know that. That's a farm that's been in farming for 100 years at least. This farm is in Newfound. And these are actual pictures of the farm that you're seeing. It's 274 acres. And the Cole family, it's a great story because the Cole family has built this back. It was down to almost nothing, and they have made a concerted effort to buy back the lands. And now they're up to 274 acres that they are conserving in easements right now. Another really awesome thing about this farm is it's diversified. It is, you know, they do no-tail squash and pumpkins. They have Christmas trees. It's forested. They also do sheep and other livestock. And I'm not sure if Anthony is still producing, but he historically produces for a local restaurant as well. He gives produce to a, sells produce to a local restaurant. Included on this farm are three small watersheds. And Anthony has estimated there is 100,000 gallons of water moving through his property daily. So his work with the Soil and Water Conservation District on our cost-share programs has helped him to be protective of that massive amount of water that's flowing through his property, as well as building his soil health. And as well as, he is our pilot farm for our carbon farming project. So this is an excellent example of the kind of work that our farmers are doing. And it's being recognized at the state level at receiving over $1.3 million in funding for his conservation easement. So I think the state is recognizing what a huge asset we have here in Buncombe County. And this is all made possible by raising the profile and the commitment that you all have made towards conservation easements in Buncombe County. So I'll turn it over to Jeremiah for our energy update.
Good evening. Thank you for not pushing us back two weeks. I'm really excited to talk to you about the great work that we've got going on. So, as you know, the second goal for our strategic plan is the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. So I want to talk to you about the work that's being done through the Sustainability Office and what we've accomplished, not only for our internal goals, but for some of our external goals as well. I can't tell you how happy I am to tell you that that solar farm that you've probably heard me talk about many, many times is finally going live late November, early December. So that is a massive win for us. It's something we've been working on for a long time, and we're very happy that it's finally just about up and running, almost ready to flip the switch. As well, as you know, we have lots of solar projects going on. We have 15 onsite renewable projects going on in county-owned facilities. We've got, as Jennifer mentioned, the fleet resolution has really started to work its magic in terms of pushing us towards a cleaner fleet. And so we've got our first order of EVs in for our fleet for FY '23. We ordered 13 new vehicles. Only four have actually been received at this point. I'm sure you all have heard, cars are hard to come by right now. But they're coming and they're on order. We've also adopted a flexible workplace policy that we hope will reduce additional greenhouse gas emissions in the community by enabling our workforce to stay at home and not have to drive to work and commute as much. Obviously, there's been some challenges. The last two years are full of them. We have not been immune to those supply chain concerns. Unavailable products have made these projects take longer than we would have liked. But I am happy to say that most things are really, really moving now and on schedule, and we're feeling really good about where we're at. Now, where are we with our 2030 goal? This is the one I really want to show you because I'm very excited about it. Our 2018, county adopted a goal of achieving 100% renewable energy for its internal operations by 2030. So in order to meet that goal, I do want to caveat this that we need about 20,000 megawatt hours of energy. It's important to understand that that's not a static number. Energy consumption is a moving target. And so that number is essentially an aggregate of several years of information sort of collected together to give us a general concept of what our overall energy consumption is. Fleet fuels, electricity, natural gas, et cetera. Currently, our onsite projects are about 7% of that goal. Our Woodfin project would be about 40% of that goal. And as you can tell, pretty easy math, there's about 52% remaining. As I spoke to vehicle emissions earlier, I think it's really important to note that approximately 35% of our greenhouse gas emissions are from our fleet. And so another big chunk of that goal can be met by continuing to push forward with clean vehicles. So significant progress can continue to be made because we do, we are running to a point at which, you know, we only have so many available roofs to continue to put solar on, so we've got to make progress in other areas. So the Clean Vehicle Resolution is a really good mechanism for us to continue to make progress towards that goal. That said, our internal goal is not our only goal. So we've got a number of community initiatives as well. This is one of my favorite pictures. We just got this one of Montford North Star Academy. Because not only does it show this great sort of weird building with lots of different types of roofs and a great solar project, but it just shows how darn beautiful our community is. So we've got solar on public facilities going in all over the county, on schools, community centers, libraries, 23 renewable projects that are ongoing currently, five additional renewable projects coming to bid, probably on Halloween Day, actually, is when I'm going to get that out. In addition, as you've heard many times, we have our weatherization program. And these numbers are since we adopted the strategic plan. So since that time in 2020, 365 residences have been weatherized. 47% of those are members of our BIPOC community. In addition, just last year, we started a low-income solar program, and we have 16 additional installations going in on low-income community members' homes. As you also have heard me talk about, we had an immensely successful solarize campaign in which we were able to get 180 residential solar contracts and essentially about a megawatt and a half of energy on residential homes in Buncombe County. And very recently, we have received an additional $1 million in ARPA funding to do solar on fire departments. Don't have a lot to report on that. It's, we're in the very, very early stages of it. But I have had my initial meeting with the fire chiefs, and there is a lot of interest. So we're very excited about that. That is it for me at that point. Jennifer and I are both here to answer any questions you have about the work.
All right. Great, great update. Any questions, Commissioners?
Y'all are going to make it too easy on us. I mean, we're here.
Well, it's a great update, and obviously just tons of great, great work being done. So thank you, thank you for checking in. And, you know, I know I speak for Parker and Terry. We really enjoy working with everybody on the subcommittee level. And we have some great community members who are really contributing a lot, too. So anyway, thanks for all the great work. Great job to everybody on your teams, and keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioners. The second one, just an overview of our storm preparedness. We use Hurricane Ian as a drill. I just want to talk through that with Fletch and Angie.
Fletcher Tobin, it hasn't been a minute. It's good to see you again. It's kind of scary seeing you walk up here again, I must kind of admit. But it's okay. It's great to see you.
Good evening, Chairman Newman and Commissioners. Fletch and I are here to talk to you a little bit about the preparedness actions we took for Hurricane Ian, because some of that work sometimes is behind the scenes. And before we talk about Hurricane Ian, I want to take you back in time to Tropical Storm Fred, because a lot of the lessons learned from Tropical Storm Fred were used to guide us as we prepared for Hurricane Ian. This is because in the week leading up to Hurricane Ian, we were told that this storm had the potential to cause the same level of damage in western North Carolina as Tropical Storm Fred had. After a significant event such as Tropical Storm Fred, FEMA and the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management require counties to conduct a preliminary damage assessment. The purpose of this is to determine if we meet the thresholds for any type of disaster declaration or state or federal assistance. The intent of this assessment is to capture as much damage data as we can as quickly as possible. Prior to Tropical Storm Fred, this type of assessment had not been conducted in Buncombe County since the floods of 2004. So it had been a minute. We attempted to use floodplain management and permits and inspection staff to conduct the preliminary damage assessment while they were conducting their more technical, detailed assessments for flood insurance and building safety purposes. This was inefficient, and it bogged down both types of assessments. Therefore, we determined that we needed to create a standalone damage assessment response team. During the preliminary damage assessment process for Fred, we were using multiple spreadsheets to collect data. There were calls coming into the emergency services office prior to standing up our storm damage hotline. There were the calls that came into the hotline, and then there was the data that was being collected in the field. This required daily efforts to reconcile and consolidate this data into a single database. This not only decreased efficiency, but it also created the potential for data to be duplicated or possibly overlooked. Therefore, we determined the need for a centralized data collection and storage system for the damage assessment data. In terms of our county radio system, during the storm, there were many instances when responders were not able to communicate on the county's radio system due to the number of people that were attempting to talk at the same time. This jeopardizes the safety of responders and the public. And because of this, we identified the need for a plan to divert non-emergency storm calls to an alternative means of communication. Communication with the public is also critical during these types of events. Disaster events are rapidly changing situations, and we must keep the public informed as the situation changes. This means from the early warning phase to the response phase and through the various stages of the recovery process. Following Tropical Storm Fred, we identified the need to prescript messages for the complete lifecycle of a disaster event. And in terms of critical resources, due to the current location, the county garage is susceptible to flooding, causing the potential to be cut off from critical resources such as spare ambulances and increasingly vulnerable fuel supplies. The key lesson we took from this was the need for continuity planning, including backup locations and alternate fuel supplies. In terms of how we worked through these lessons, as stated, we had identified the need to create a standalone damage assessment response team. We had convened a planning group with the departments that are represented here on this slide. And we began meeting in June to discuss our experiences with Tropical Storm Fred and determine the best solution for collecting preliminary damage assessment data for future events. County GIS staff developed an initial damage report form that can be used by the public to self-report damages through a link on the county website. And this same form will also be used by call takers answering our damage report hotline. The questions on the form are designed to capture exactly the information that we need for FEMA and the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management in order to determine if we qualify for any type of disaster declaration. All of this data is driven to a single database, improving efficiencies and building on our lessons learned. Communication and public engagement worked to prescript messages for warning, response, and the recovery phase of an event. This was done by reviewing all of the messaging that had been pushed out during Tropical Storm Fred and creating templates that can be quickly and easily adapted for future emergency events. We developed an operating guide document for the damage assessment response team members as we anticipated that many of the employees that could potentially be on this team might not be familiar with disaster declaration or damage assessment processes. At the same time that these efforts were underway, we also asked department directors for names of staff that would be available for a one-to-two-week temporary reassignment to collect damage assessment data. As a result, 35 employees representing multiple county departments, as you can see on the slide, volunteered for temporary reassignment as members of our damage assessment response team. The Damage Assessment Response Team Guide was distributed to the team members. The IT department purchased 10 iPads for team members to use for field data collection, and those are stored at the emergency services office to be deployed to team members when they're activated. We held a team member orientation at the end of August. We have further training scheduled next week. And as Hurricane Ian approached, an email was sent to the team members four days prior to potential impact to let them know that we were monitoring the storm and would follow up if there was a need to activate the team. The storm damage hotline that was stood up following Tropical Storm Fred has become a permanent fixture. The telephone number is tied to a Microsoft Teams account so that call takers are able to answer the hotline from their county computer. Call takers have a script to guide their interaction with callers so that employees with less knowledge of the disaster recovery process are able to help answer calls if needed. As we prepared for Hurricane Ian, we worked with IT to update the messaging on the hotline and ensure that designated staff had access to take calls as well as retrieve voicemails. As Hurricane Ian approached, the script from Tropical Storm Fred was updated to reflect the new initial damage report form. the new initial damage report form. On your screen, there is a small example of some of the questions on the form. Call takers populate the information on the form, which feeds into the same spreadsheet as the information gathered through residents accessing this form on the county website and self-reporting damages. Severe weather events generate a significant number of calls for roads blocked due to down trees. If there is no immediate safety issue, these calls are considered non-emergency. Dispatching those calls and the subsequent communication they create yields to a substantial amount of radio traffic which can work to overwhelm the county's radio system and create the potential for emergency communications to fail. In order to keep this type of communication off of the county radio system, emergency management requested two channels on the state Viper radio system. We developed a procedure for 911 communications to communicate tree down locations to staff in the Temporary Emergency Operations Center so that we could relay these calls to the fire departments using the Viper channels. While emergency responders in the county have the Viper channels in their existing radios, when they switch to these channels, it moves the traffic off to the state system and preserves some of the capacity of the county's outgrown radio system. And I'm going to turn it over to Fletch to talk about human services and mass care planning.
Good evening. So with any storm, whether it's a hurricane or a winter storm, there's a potential for a need for sheltering. So in anticipation of that, we always coordinate very closely with the Red Cross. We met with them, also met with the Health and Human Services, Public Health Preparedness Coordinator, and the City of Asheville Emergency Management Teams to review our plans and make sure we're on the same page. We pre-designated a couple shelter locations in case we needed and pre-staged equipment there. DSS in North Carolina is by statute required to help assist in staffing these shelters. So we reviewed our rosters and our training capacities within our social work and economic services teams. And we also had our community paramedics do outreach to our unhoused communities to inform them of dangers and flood risks. And historically, we've had some particular communities who tend to flood and have displaced persons. And so we always communicate with them as well to decrease the likelihood of us requiring staff shelters.
Emergency services converted our conference room into a Temporary Emergency Operations Center to accommodate a partial activation. Staff developed an EOC staffing plan and schedule for Friday night into Saturday and revised that as the storm moved closer and the timing accelerated. Logistics plans, including sleeping arrangements to accommodate 24-hour operations, as well as the purchase of bottled water and meal planning, were made two days prior to storm impact in case local businesses happened to be closed. Weather information was pushed out to the fire chiefs three times a day for the 48 hours prior to the storm event. And we also conducted daily briefings with county management and key department heads. Emergency services staff verified contact information for area utility companies. We held a detailed briefing with the fire chiefs the day prior to impact. And plans were made for the operational coordination of water rescue and structural rescue resources during the storm. All of these plans were communicated with the City of Asheville Emergency Management and our Temporary Emergency Operations Center was staffed Friday afternoon to be ready for storm impact. Now, as I said, the forecast that we were getting a week prior to the storm was similar impacts to Tropical Storm Fred. If you look at the bottom corner of the screen, this is the storm track that we were planning for on Tuesday, September the 27th. This was three to four days from impact. Beginning that Monday, we were hearing from North Carolina Emergency Management to be ready for another Tropical Storm Fred. The Urban Search and Rescue Task Force Two is managed by Buncombe County Emergency Services with team membership from fire departments throughout the county. This team's primary response area is the western part of the state, but they are deployable statewide. And we began standing this team up prior to Tropical, or Hurricane Ian to brace for impact. We began equipment and readiness checks and polled fire chiefs for their team member Again, look at the bottom corner of the screen. This was the forecast rainfall the afternoon of Wednesday, September the 28th. This is two days prior to impact. As you can see in the oval, the easternmost part of Buncombe County is in that six to eight inch projected rainfall. At this point, we had developed a preliminary team roster, completed fueling, and made arrangements for team locations and meals. Based on the forecast, we communicated to North Carolina Emergency Management that we would not be releasing this team to deploy outside Buncombe County until the storm had passed through. The day prior to the storm, the team roster was finalized, all trucks and trailers were loaded, and team leaders were briefed and pre-trip inspections were performed. On the screen, you see an example of only one page of the vehicle inspection form. There's a six-page form completed, including pictures of all sides for each trailer and tow vehicle to document the pre-storm condition of the equipment in case damage occurs during the response. This takes a little bit of time to get ready to go out the door. Team members were briefed on potential impacts and current plans. Then the day of the storm, team members were required to report to the emergency services warehouse hours in advance of the projected impact time. Each team member must complete a medical evaluation, sign out equipment, and then receive a briefing on forecasted conditions and appropriate safety measures. And as you can see from the picture, our county manager came by to check in with everyone on the day of the storm. Multiple departments provided task force staff for this event. However, it's important to note that there are several other fire departments that also have members on this task force. However, staffing for each event is based on availability within each department at any given time. And finally, Ian had to change plans. After all was said and done, the day prior to the storm, Ian began to make a significant shift eastward, but there was still some impact of Buncombe, to Buncombe County. EOC staff and Task Force Two team members maintained planned staffing levels on Friday in a wait-and-see approach. We were fortunate that Ian did largely bypass us. I would like to thank all of the departments referenced in the presentation for their contributions to these preparedness efforts. In the end, the preparedness actions taken provided valuable training for all staff and departments involved, and the experience continued to highlight the need for expanding emergency services infrastructure to optimize our readiness posture.
All right. Great report Angie and Fletch. Thank you both for being here. Commissioners, any questions?
I just want to say thank you. I love this. I love that we're looking at what we learned from Tropical Storm Fred and then using this so that we work smarter each time we're assessing and making improvements. So thank you both and all your team for this really excellent work.
I just want to echo that as well, having worked in that realm for a number of years. This looks very familiar. And also knowing that storms have changes of plans. And I really applaud you for taking the opportunity, even knowing that the storm was going to shift paths, to continue working through it so that you could learn from those lessons. And hopefully, we won't have to deal with this again, but unfortunately, with our environmental presentation that came before your alls with the impacts of climate change, I'm afraid that this is going to be something that you have to rely on time and time again. And job well done. Thank you all for what you do.
And I've also just, I would share, you know, I know our constituents in Buncombe County really appreciate this, but also as county commissioner, I hear from our neighbors elsewhere in western North Carolina as well about how much they appreciate the cooperation and support from, from Buncombe County when there's a regional need as well. So thanks so much to your, to your team for thinking about the region as a whole and helping out our neighbors just as we would want them to help out us if we ever needed it as well. So thank you all. All right. Avril, anything else? Okay, great. All right. Next up, under Old Business, is an update on the Ad hoc reappraisal committee recommendations and follow-up action items. And Keith Miller, our tax assessor, and Burnett Walls from Strategy and Innovation are here to help us out with this item.
Good evening Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and give you an update. Start back, first on a little background of where we've came from. So after the 2021 reappraisal, this board, my office, county manager, we all were filled in, filled in questions about the reappraisal, equity in the reappraisal, many items that we felt that needed to be addressed. It led us then to this board appointing a ad hoc reappraisal committee to come up with ideas on how we could do things better and how we could improve the process, which I think was a great success. We still have some of those committee members here with us tonight who have continued to be support through this process all the way to the end, and I truly appreciate what they've done for us. So we were here a few weeks ago and the committee, the ad hoc committee presented with you, to you, the recommendations in which they had from those meetings. And then I come back this evening to then talk to you about some action plans that we'll put to those recommendations. So we'll start with the recommendations from the committee. The ad hoc appraisal committee recommendations, increase education and outreach, increase capacity in the assessment department, development assessment policies to optimize tax revenue, enhance permit and permitting compliance. And then the staff recommendations with that is to increase the education, outreach, and improve assessment data quality. So the staff, along with Strategy and Innovation's support, has been working for weeks to put together action plans to achieve these items. Let me say is that when we started the ad hoc appraisal committee, there was a few probably bigger topics that we talked about, and one of those I want, I want to quickly mention is that when we talked about the sales ratio studies and we talked about the concern from some of our residents about possibly inequities between our, our mid to low valued homes versus our high, high value homes. And, and we've kept that in the forefront through this. And although through this presentation, you probably won't hear me pinpoint an action plan to fix that, but what I want you to keep in mind is that all these action plans will contribute to that because it's not one thing that will, that will make this better. It's multiple things that we can do together that will increase the, the quality of what we do every day. So, starting with number one, increase the education and outreach. So the committee, the recommendations, leverage social media, faith-based organization, and nonprofits to engage and educate the community. We've put together a partnership with our internal CAPE team to develop a comprehensive communication engagement plan over the next two years to inform our community about reappraisal, help them better understand what it's about, how it happens, why we do it, and so on. Some things that will come from that plan will be community meetings, possible newsletters going out to our residents, and a robust print and social media outreach. We have put an RFP on the street and we're interviewing contractors to help us with that outreach campaign currently, and that's currently budgeted in our FY23 budget for $100,000 for that, that contractor. We're really excited about that. We know it's going to be a robust plan. We plan to use that to reach as many of our residents in Buncombe County to help them better understand the process as possible. Then reassess limits on exemptions to expand eligibility and participation. This is one that, that the commissioners, this board may choose to act on and move forward. This will, this would take consideration of lobbying the legislator to reevaluate the methodology for qualifying. Currently, if you're an elderly resident, 65 years of age, and don't have income to exceed $31,900 a year, you can qualify for an exemption on your property value. But what many people are telling us is that the income limits are too low, is that $31,900 is not included in everyone in the program that needs to be included in the program. Do we need to relook at it as far as can we build in a different methodology related to the AMI, to the household size dependence, or the other things that needs to be considered? So we are just, I would tell you that this is a conversation going across the state. The assessors are all discussing it. Many other counties are discussing how we can make a change here and who across the state we could help lobby for that change. So that, that's something there that this board can decide that if you want to legislate, go to the legislators on that. No new costs at this time for that effort. Continued on the education and outreach, partner with our local Board of Realtors to provide assistance and education on assessment and/or the appeal process. We're really excited that the Land of the Sky Association of Realtors has partnered with us to bring together Realtors to volunteer for this program. We will start in January, put it on clinics, hopefully twice a week in the communities around the county where residents can come, meet with a Realtor, and if they need comparables to figure out, help them win their appeal, a Realtor to give them advice on what the value of their property may be, help them work through that, help them file the appeal, then those Realtors will be available on a volunteer basis, week by week, to help them through that. We're very excited that Land of the Sky Association of Realtors has decided to, to join in with us on that. We're also with that looking for a legal office to join with us in that partnership also, to help those residents who may need assistance in preparing an appeal, even to the Board of加载ation and Review, help them better understand the statutes when it comes to exemptions, what they may qualify for, what they may not, and why they would not. So that, that will be the next effort in that appeals clinic. Provide expert community ambassador to provide education in, in the appraisal process. Evaluate the need for the community ambassador based on response of the appeals clinic. So as we move forward and get closer to the next reappraisal, we will evaluate what that looks like as far as establishing an ambassador to go out into the communities and represent what reappraisal looks like in a more one-on-one environment with our residents to help them better understand that. We, the staff will currently take on this responsibility at our current resources for FY23.
And Keith, just a, so the community ambassador concept, that's envisioned as being like a county employee that goes out and, and kind of does that community education in the community?
Yeah, so it will probably be a county employee because to try and find a volunteer that has the knowledge of property tax that it would take to go out into the community and represent us, to help the, to help the residents better understand what's available to them, may not be actually something by day that we can find. So we also, we did can talk about it would take an employee, maybe someone who's been in the business for many years and have better understanding of what was available to the residents. So there's things there, I think, to still come on having a better understanding of that and who we can employ to make that happen as we get closer to the next reappraisal.
Okay. And then the, the community kind of outreach effort prior to that, that you were describing, that's, that work, I mean, there's, there's the work the Realtors are going to have like volunteered to, to be a part of that, which is great. But then the other community engagement, is that also envisioned that that's the county employees that would be doing that outreach?
We, I think, I think we're going to get to that in another recommendation.
Okay.
County, county employees will be a support through the Association of Realtors through that process also. We will be involved with it. So we, we will be available to give them advice. So if I don't touch on...
Oh, the, yeah, the contractor position.
Contractor position?
Yeah.
The contractor position will be from the community engagement. That will be not a county employee. Is that your question?
Yes, that was, is the contractor position that I was...
Yes, that would not be, that would not be...
Group or person that we would hire to kind of assist in carrying out that part of the work.
Yeah. So we looked at a contractor for less hours than a, a full-time employee would be to help us implement that community engagement plan. Increase capacity in the assessment department, develop process to correct the percentage of properties with inaccurate attributes. We currently are reviewing all the MLS listings that comes through the multiple listing service. This is a change in process that did come from some of the conversations from the committee. What the process used to be is that our staff will review sales transactions in an effort to qualify those sales to be used in the analysis for the next reappraisal. From those sales transactions, then we would often find unlisted improvements on those properties in which we would go back and, and put an assessment on. The change in that process is now we're getting, we want to get in front of it. So every week, every listing that comes through the multiple listing service, whether it is sold or not, our staff reviews it immediately. So if you list your home today, probably within three days, a staff person's going to be looking at it to look if, if we have missed any of those improvements, maybe unpermitted improvements or otherwise, to try and get ahead of that, that we could notify that property owner before the property sells, that there could be a change in their assessment. That means that we're reviewing every transaction as far as withdrawals, things coming on the market immediately, properties that didn't sell, properties that didn't sell. That means that we're reviewing every transaction as far as withdrawals, things coming on the market immediately, properties that didn't sell, properties that have sold. So, any of those transactions, we are currently looking at. Partner with the Realtors community.
Just for one sec, can you, can you just walk through in a little bit more depth sort of how that plays out? If an MLS listing shows that there have been changes to the property that would result in changes, what comes next and how does that process move forward?
So, in the state of North Carolina, improvements is a self-reporting system. Every property owner by statute is required to report to the assessor's office improvements to your property. If you don't report those improvements, then the statute also gives the ability for the assessor to assess penalties upon you on that assessment. So, here's what that would look like. So, as an example, let's say you have a two-story house. When you built the house, you only had the first story finished living area. The upstairs was not finished. We go through time and now you're in it five years and you decide you're going to finish the upstairs. So, you yourself, as a handy person, you finished the upstairs. Now it's a living area. But you never reported that to us, or you maybe even never got a permit for it, or maybe you didn't have to get a permit for it, but it was never reported. We never knew that. So, now let's say that the home sells or it comes on the market, or we find out. We now put that assessment on that additional square feet. The statute gives us the ability to go back six years to capture the value that escaped taxation with penalties as high as 60%. Or, it's another part of the statute that gives us the ability that we could go back 10 years with no penalties, only interest paid on the taxes. So, there's, that's the remedies for collecting that data which has not been reported from the property owners. Did that answer your question?
For right, yeah, thank you at this point.
Other customers find out? So, we give notice to the property owner of whomever the property owner was at the time that the value escaped taxation. So, if you owned it today and you sold it tomorrow and you never reported that to me, we would still give you the notice and the taxes would be in your name. However, what often happens is that the new owner will get stuck with that tax bill because the prior owner has the ability to walk away. Taxes are a lien on the property, not the owner's. So, if you take that property and you purchase it and that lien then is established based upon prior year valuation that we found, then you could be the one that would be on the hook to pay those taxes to clear up that lien. That's another reason that we're trying to get ahead of it. If we can get ahead of it on, as we find this information and get the assessment done and the lien on the property, then that would have to be paid before closing or at closing. So, the new owner does not have the burden of that tax bill.
Is there a certain sort of threshold for the types of improvements that would be considered eligible? Or is it really a case-by-case basis or?
The statute gives the ability to define those as substantial. I would tell you that's the word used in the statute that says any substantial valuation that has escaped taxation for the prior years can be assessed. So, I will tell you that we look at that often and try and say, if you tell us that you added a fireplace to your house, is that a substantial value that has escaped taxation? And the answer to that is probably no. Because we have to also look at what it takes to collect that and also put the notices out, do the assessment on it. So, if the value is too small, then it's really, you're not getting a return on the taxes to even determine if that's worth it or not. So, substantial, of course, is a word that creates some gray area for us. But I think if you find a house that is under-reported in a thousand square feet of living area, that's substantial. Is a fireplace substantial? Probably not. Now, what is in between there? There is some gray area on how we handle that.
Keith, how often does that happen?
It actually does happen often. And we are currently now building a report around that so I can better help you better understand what those numbers look like and what that value looks like. But we do them every week. I can tell you that. We find them every week and don't always come from the multiple listing service. We often have reporting from neighbors or people that may have prior owned the house. There's a lot of different ways that we get reported to us, other than just the owner.
I think I'd read somewhere that in the MLS listings for the, in the previous process where for the properties that actually did transact, actually did sell, and so the county's tax office got the MLS information, that it was maybe around half of the, half of the properties that went through the MLS disclosure had some improvements kind of above and beyond what the county's records indicated. Although maybe not all, maybe not all of those are substantial enough to trigger, you know, back payment of taxes. But they did have some improvements that were above and beyond what we had.
And I think we reported to you at one point, the number you heard was about 60% of the sales transactions that come through our office, we make some change to. Could be a fireplace, a bedroom, could be a thousand square feet, could be a basement. So, 60% of those have some change to them. Now, the question that most people have is that well, how did we not know that? Well, we don't know it because 99% of the homes in this county, we will never go inside of. So, we don't inspect the interior of homes. I don't always know if you have a finished basement, or if you have living area on the second floor, or if you have four bedrooms rather than three. These are things that, again, it's a self-reporting system and the owner's responsibility is to report it to us. We will talk a little bit more here about how we're going to try and overcome some of that. But Keith-
Sorry, similar line of questions. What about accessory dwelling units? How is that kind of, it depends on what the purpose of the unit is or how it's built or what's in it, but?
Right, if you're talking about a rental, then that's an accessory building, yes. I mean, that's a substantial value that's escaped taxation. If you're talking about a storage building, that could be different. So, again, it's a matter of what you're really defining as an accessory building.
It's something that you would, in most cases, need a permit for. I guess my question is, would you not, would you know about that or not if there's a new structure in the backyard?
We get an electronic copy of all the permits, okay, from the city and the county. But that's only happened in the past few years. We used to get only paper permits from the county and the city. So, I probably don't have to say much more about that. Paper gets lost and, you know, but for a building or an improvement that needs a permit, then yes, we should have that information and we should know about that. So, partnering with, partnering with the Realtors to communicate the process for updating property characteristics to the MLS. Recently had a lunch and learn with the Realtors. They're very interested and also partnering with us on this. It is for their benefit also when they list a property to make sure the property owner knows that they should be checking their characteristics on their, on their homes or their buildings to make sure that they are listed properly. Community mailer we plan to send in December requesting residents to update and validate property characteristics. This is, this will be like a listing form and for any of you that's been around for a while in the tax business, we used to list real property. You used to get a listing form, just like you do for your personal property. It was mailed to you every year and you were asked to list your, your real estate, just like you would if you have a business. That hasn't been done in years. When the state went to a permanent listing system, most counties stopped that. And also due to the, probably the cost incurred from having to do that. We do anticipate that we will do that again for the next two years. We will send a letter and some form of a listing form to all the property owners and ask them to update their property characteristics. I will send you a form that gives you the information that we currently have, ask you to review it. If there's any changes, please notify us of those, us of those changes and we will have it taken care of for you. So, that will be an effort that we will work for the next two years to collect more data, to make the data better moving into the next reappraisal. Cost of that?
Keith, on that, it seems like a good idea. Just, it'll be interesting to see what kind of responses we get, right? Because we can't compel everyone to respond, but hopefully a lot of folks will. From, you know, just from a legal standpoint, people, we can't require people to fill this out and send it back, right? We're asking people to do it, but that's not something we can, we can sort of mandate. But it is, but the state statutes do speak to, people are supposed to report these improvements, right? So, people do have improvements made, you know, they really should, you know, update us, especially if we're kind of taking this step to make it really, you know, kind of specifically to ask for that. So, if you have an improvements in particular, you ought to, folks ought to make sure they're accurately sharing that information with their property.
Right, right. And also say for our residents is that they can assist in this overall in helping improve equity in the assessments by reporting these improvements. Everyone should be paying their fair share, no more, no less. But if you know that you've done something you haven't reported, then a fair thing to do for all the residents is to report that to us and allow us to assess it.
Will the, will the information that is sent to residents, will it provide a description of what we currently understand it to be so they can kind of compare it to that? Or does it just sort of a blank piece of document that they populate?
No, it is currently our plan to send you the information we currently have. We hope to be able to send you a footprint sketch of your house and all the characteristics that are associated with it. So, you can see what we have listed, that we've notified you that we only have two bathrooms and now you know we have three. And that you would have the ability to. We will also make that as easy as possible is that, that form will even have a QR code on it where you can scan it with your phone and enter the information real quickly, even on your phone if you want to. So, we're going to put a plan in place to try and make that as easy for the residents to respond to us as possible.
And this is- Sorry, I was going to say, that's actually on the website, right? I mean, anybody can go on there right now and look at what it is and then be able to go ahead and update it with you.
It is on the website. We did a pilot a couple of years ago to see the response on that. And as Chairman Newman has mentioned, the response was not as good as we hoped. So, we will take a different approach now to see if we can improve that response, to get people to do that. But for those, for those residents who want to check, please go to the website, look at your property. There's, if you go there, there is true, there's a button that you can press and say, "Report improvements," and you fill it out and it'll, it'll send it straight to us and that's all you have to do. So, thank you for reminding us.
This is probably less common, but if someone, you know, for clerical error or whatever, if there's improvements that we believe are there that in fact are not there, they can also, this would be an opportunity to call that to their attention so they can report, like, actually, I don't have that other half bath or whatever. And so, they could, they could get it adjusted in their direction.
It does go both ways, yes.
Yes, okay.
So, we'll plan for that mailer to go out to the residents in December. The regular listing period for all real estate and personal property is January 1 through January 31. So, that is the time all property owners should list improvements or personal property. This is, this is an estimated cost of about $50,000 annually. Currently budgeted for the first year in FY 23 and then we'll move forward to FY 24. There will be some consideration here of, if a full-time employee would be needed to be able to handle and process such a program in place. And we'll consider that as we move forward. Develop key metrics to trigger increase in staff currently in place. We currently with strategy and innovation have those metrics in place. And we did present those even last year to the county manager in our budget presentation. So, we will continue to use that same format and moving forward. The current metrics help us to right-size our office to better understand how many transactions that are coming through and how many are assigned to every employee. So, it's quite a great, it's a good analysis that strategy and innovation has helped us with. I will be asking in the FY 24 budget for one full-time employee at least from that metrics of the transactional database. Increase the frequency of property reappraisals to a two- to three-year frequency. Currently, staff does not recommend changing the frequency. The estimated cost of the reappraisal currently is about $1.2 million, but when we look at staff time and our contractors that in place. So, to increase that from four years to two years, you're basically looking at increasing that cost, $1.2 million plus the additional full-time employees that it would take to be able to produce that work within a two-year period rather than a four-year period.
Can I, can I ask a question on this, Keith? So, when the, we have the reappraisal year, so there's some contract work that comes in. And, but in terms of the overall like staffing size of the office, does it change very much in revale years versus non-reval years or is it pretty steady?
Typically only temporary employees. We add temporary employees to help us with the admin duties.
And is it the temporary employees that mostly drive? Is it, so is it, is the, is the $1.2 million like an additional $1.2 million over and above kind of the operating costs for the office? Or is that the cost for the office in a revale year?
$1.2 million would be an additional expense. And that pays for all of our contracted services also, which is, which are our flyovers, our pictometry photography, our street level photography. All the tools that we use during the reappraisal from our contractors are included in that $1.2 million. Develop assessment policies to optimize tax revenue. Differentiate short-term rentals, investments in secondary homes, assessment approach from that of single-family homes used as primary residence. Allocate short-term rental revenue to fund the homeowner grant program. This, this board asked me a few months ago to consider re, looking at the methodology of value in short-term rentals, in which I did. And I think we've been through it and talked many hours about it with many different people. Currently, there is no legal pathway for me to do that. I think after hours of conversation with our own internal legal team, the school of government, Department of Revenue, other taxing offices across the state, we all understand that legally, we probably should not approach that, not probably. We should not approach that under the current statutes the way they are. That would take a legislative change if this board wants to push forward with something like that in order to make a methodology change in how we assess short-term rentals or rentals in general, not just short-term rentals. We will make the best effort to identify these short-term rentals and other rentals to do a complete analysis, determine the influence that short-term rentals may have on the overall valuation of the county. Locating these rentals, whether it's short-term or long-term, is not an easy task to try and find them. There is no reporting in place that they have to tell us where they're at and they won't be now due to current lawsuits in place that are happened. But there is data that we can purchase who, that will help us locate these and other rentals. So, we can start watching the, how they affect, how they are affecting us in the marketplace to do the analysis on them. Look at the sales transactions that are happening from them. The other thing with-
Can I ask a question on that? And, you know, I mean, this is, you know, I think that's, it would certainly be interesting to have more information about how the proliferation of vacation rentals is affecting the real estate market, both for people who are purchasing homes, maybe even more so for people who are renting homes as so many of these houses have been converted from long-term rentals to short-term rentals. I know with all of these issues that we're bringing up here, like, we're putting a lot of questions in front of your office, right? So, so I'm certainly not against having this kind of information. But just kind of thinking about like the role of your office and kind of policy setting and the work that you have to do, I'm just curious how like the analysis around how short-term rentals are affecting overall valuations in the county. Like, how would your office actually use that information?
Information is to track the sales transactions on them. Also, when you buy the data, you also get the income information, the occupancy of rentals. So, you can do a better assessment on the income approach to do an overall comparison to what the sales approach versus the income approach might look like. So, if there was some change to go forwards with the legislators on how we, how we value these differently, it's a good idea to have that information to be able to present even back to you to say, here's what we've learned about these rentals over the past couple of years from the data that we have been purchasing.
If the, if the legislature doesn't change the rules with this, with this information, which again, I would love to have it, I'm not against it. I'm just also aware of the workload that your whole team has got in front of you. Will it be like actionable information, assuming the laws stay consistent as they are today?
The only actionable that we can do with it at this time is the business personal property listing, which I'll get to next. Is that any rental is required by statute to report their personal property assets in that rental. So, if you, if you have a short-term rental, then you should be reporting to the assessor every year on your business property listing. Your beds, your furniture, your TVs, your silverware, your dishes, all the things- all the things that you provide in that rental is considered a business asset and should be reported for taxation. That's also true for just your typical rental. If you have a rental which you rent on the yearly basis and you provide that tenant with a stove, refrigerator, maybe a bed, then you need to report that also as a business asset. So, once we do establish where the locations of these are at and we will be able to do a better job also with that enforcement or asking compliance, is the word really, just ask for compliance from the owners on this. We will also, we plan to mail a listing form to approximately 12, I think there's about 12,000 current residents who we have identified who do not live at the address in which the home is located. So if we find a mismatch in your address between Melon and Citus, then we identify you as probably, you have a, that's a rental house. So we're also going to send you a letter telling you that you, your responsibility is to list that and let us know that you do have a rental. And that's, and just that mailing alone to those rentals is about $12,000 for us to do that campaign. To purchase the rental data is about $50,000 a year. And it's quite a task for us to take on as far as staff. So that's, that's a whole new thing to have to manage within the processes. So you're right, Chairman Newman.
So Chairman Newman, I just, I want to make sure I check with Frue on this. If we do purchase that in tax, we cannot share that with zoning or any other places. So I just want to make sure that you understand to your point on policy, it would be only for tax purposes. It couldn't be used, that data. I want to make sure that is correct. But as you were thinking about that question, I just want to make sure you know that it's only be taxed. We couldn't share it with another department.
Okay, I don't have any question about that right now.
And Keith, I think I've got another question.
Yes.
This slide and then we could probably take up all night talking about the legalities of taxing SDRs verbally. I guess I would argue that it's had a cataclysmic impact on our housing market if you view our housing crisis as one of scarcity and one of a rental-based crisis. But the, the, the basic nature of that first bullet point, is there, in the eyes of the school of government and others, is there really no difference between a whole home, short-term rental or a backyard shed home, short-term rental or a, you know, one bedroom within your basement? Like is there, is there no diff, no difference between the types?
There can be a differentiation. Like downtown Asheville, we have a condo complex in which the third and fourth floor are set aside as short-term rentals. We can assess those as such because that's what they're set aside and that's what they've been built for. And they have the right to do that. They were given the right to do that. So even if within the, used to within the city for homestays, if they were permitted to have a special use, then we could assess them differently. So they have to be used in a different way or they have to be set aside in a different way that they do have this use versus someone else that would have it. So, yes, there can be some differentiated, some that may be set aside and are currently in a commercial zoning that may be considered even as cabins, that we assess them commercially as cabins. They are rented on a short-term basis, so we do look at those on the income approach. The, the real issue is going into residential neighborhoods and trying to value those differently of houses sitting side by side that are really, had been established for the same use of a single-family home. And part of that is, Mr. Frue and I have discussed, and he, I'll have him talk more about the legal side of it if you want, but it does come back to the North Carolina constitution that talks about fair taxation and how you can not treat people differently. So if you don't have something that sets you aside to be different, then I can assess you differently. That's what it comes down to. So if you're in a homeowners association that says you, Mr. Sloan, can rent your house on a short-term rental and we've given you the right to do that, then I can assess you for that. But if you're just like everybody else, then that's when it creates a problem as far as fax, fair taxation. And if you'd like for Mr. Frue to explain that probably a little better than I did, then I'm sure he'd be happy to.
I'll ask Mr. Frue at a, at another time. Yeah, yeah. I'll make a list.
Develop assessment pol, policies to optimize tax revenue. Focus lobbying efforts to increase revenue streams. Consider lobbying legislator on valuation exclusion, homestead exemption for full-time county residents. This is something that goes on all across the United States. There are many jurisdictions that do this. You've heard of states, you know, South Carolina is one of them, Florida's one of them. There's, there's many of them that if you are a resident, that you get some difference treated in taxation. Where that be a homestead exemption, such as Florida, you get $25,000 off your value for a homestead exemption if you are a full-time resident. There's other methods. South Carolina has a different model. But the consideration here for you and our legislators is that do, does North Carolina need something like this to protect our full-time residents in these communities versus those people who, as you have mentioned, may be buying up some of our housing stock for rentals and do not live here? So it would be a benefit to those property owners. We have done some analysis on it. And looking at a fixed rate of a discount rather than a purchase does give a larger relief to those moderate to low-value homes than it does our higher-value homes. So there's some of these plans that really can help those folks in our communities who need the help. So that's just for your consideration. That is not something locally that we can do. That would have to be a state change from our legislators. Enhancing the permit compliance. Partner with our local Board of Real Estate Professionals Builders Association to ensure accuracy on the property attributes. We spoke a little bit about that. This is an overlap, a little bit of our multiple listing service efforts and our partnership with our Realtors Association. But talking with Realtors and continuing to talk with Realtors and meeting with them, we will make them more and more aware of why we should be reporting these improvements, why should they be having these conversations with their buyers and sellers about reporting these improvements. We will be continuing to conduct the informational sessions with Realtors to provide education on the process. We recently did a lunch and learn with the Land and Sky Association of Realtors and went through this and helped them better understand what that process looks like. Enhance internal process for communication between the county assessment and the permit department. This has been implemented and we work hand-in-hand with our county permit department as when we find unpermitted improvements, we do report them to our permitted office and they follow up with the property owners to make sure that they are in compliance with our life safety situations, to make sure something has not been created that would be a detriment to our residents. Develop a one-stop website hub that will provide access to property records, maps, appeals, taxes and dashboards. We're working with our IT and CAPE to comprehensively overhaul our assessment website. Enhance accessibility and the user experience. Provide an easy-to-navigate site for the things in the assessment and enhance the transparency of the key metrics and assessment data. One thing that we did hear some from, some of the public comment from the committee is we did hear some residents that come forth was talking about our website that they were not able to find easily information related to their property. So we are, we've already started that campaign and CAPE's going to share some information with you here on that. You guys want to do that now? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Josh Medury. I work with the CAPE team and Angelica Tyler will also be joining us today. So when Keith brought this to us, we were, wanted to make sure that we're meeting our residents' needs. Obviously, the most majority of what we're looking at right here is the behavior that's currently what people are looking for when they go to the website. It's overwhelmingly to pay taxes. But as this is going to proceed through the assessment year, we're obviously going to have a lot of people looking for the values as well. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't have to make people change behaviors. They're already doing this. So we were doing the, the mockups that you're about to see are basically trying to stay in line with their current behavior. So we were wanting to make sure that they made the, the accessibility of the things that they're already looking for front and center as well as the values to be easily accessible. Currently, the site is for tax purposes kind of archaic, I guess is the polite way to say. It's very difficult to navigate to find your value and then go back and pay your bill. You have to return to the, the start of the process. So we wanted to make that much more refined. Take the tools that I think Keith will be talking about with the assessment, a third-party vendor. It will make neighborhood values much more accessible so that you understand how we're getting to that price evaluation and things of that nature, as well as highlighting some of the other services that are wonderful like Discover Buncombe that gives us information, the residents' information on things like schools, parks and other services that we provide with the county. The universal search function, this is what this mockup is showing, that not only would they be able to find their property on the tax site itself, so at the very top of this slide, it's kind of hard for you guys to see, but that search is behind that image of the landscape. That would also be present on the tax department's website. So everywhere that they're accessing this information or get to our website or even a portion of our website like the tax, tax.buncombe.org, they would be able to search easily. And this would be much more refined than it currently is. Currently, you have to search by a particular criteria, meaning your PIN number or a bill number. And there's no other way that's fairly intuitive anyways to do that. You have to do it by one particular set of, of data points. So we're trying to make that much more refined so that you can put your name in there, your address, your PIN if you wanted to, or a bill number. And it'll all be searchable without any, anything more than clicking the search button. We also realized that a lot of this, that are, these mockups and the things that we've been discussing are based on feedback that I'm getting from Keith's department and Jennifer's department on what's, things are the biggest roadblocks. But we also, Keith, and I'll introduce Angelica Tyler. She's part of our new position for, I'll let her explain it, but.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you about the public input site, engagebuncomcounty.org, and how we plan to close that public input feedback loop from the ad hoc reappraisal that was very visible on Engage Buncombe and got a lot of public comment. We've, are kind of going back to the public with the information they shared and the feedback they've shared with us and showing those mockups, making those available in a really short survey you see here. And especially bringing those to our legacy neighborhood communities. I'm representing Rashida McDaniels from the public engagement side tonight. She couldn't be here with us, but she has an event tomorrow evening with the Legacy Neighborhood Coalition where she will share the survey and share the current navigation of the assessment website with those groups. She's already sent out that information to them to preview this evening. And again, get that feedback, feedback boots on the ground from our community members. Let them see the mockups and add anything that they would like to see, questions or concerns they have, and just general feedback on that navigation.
The commissioners have any questions that we could answer?
I don't think right now, but stick around. We might.
And the IT department with the custom development is already working on implementing a lot of these changes. The universal search is already in progress. So we recognize the need to make that these, this is a long time coming. So a lot of this is already in process and we'll continue to refine it.
So the next one wa, is the implementation of AI software to enhance the accuracy of the assessment property values. We discussed this with you some time back. We have contracted with the company SAS Analytics to provide a artificial intelligence software resolution that we are currently in the process of implementing. Now, what does this do for us? This will give us a valuation completely computer-driven every night of every parcel in the county. And I think I might have said to you one time before, from the ad hoc reappraisal committee, one of the committee members said to us one night, there's only one way to take the bias out of anything and that's to remove the human. So we're removing the human. And we're going to let the computer tell us if we're missing something, if the assessment's not right, then we'll see why the assessment's not right. If we're, we also use it as an audit tool as much as evaluation tool to make sure the things that we are doing, we are not missing if the computer can help us see these areas that we need to improve upon. So that, that is currently in, in the implementation process. Reevaluate market areas, what we call neighborhoods.
Hey Keith, just a question. So this SAS Analytics software, is this something they're developing for Buncombe County? Or is this something that they have, they offer to many counties and we're kind of procuring it along with many others?
They're, they're offering it for any county. Currently in North Carolina, there's Mecklenburg, Wake, Durham, I think. Most of the larger counties are going this way as far as with the artificial intelligence to help them with their reappraisal processes.
And in terms of how the tool would work for Buncombe County, is it the, the intent is that it really wouldn't change a lot, at least like say in the near term, maybe in five or 10 years, we've learned from stuff and who knows? But in the, in the near term, won't really change a lot about how like your office and your staff go about doing their work. This is just sort of another layer of information that gets run that you, then you kind of compare it to two, to say like, all right, well, what came out differently and why and kind of look at that. But it doesn't mean that you're not still doing the, the process you would be doing anyway.
No. And I have even mentioned this to the staff. When you, when you mention artificial intelligence, people automatically think, ah, I'm going to probably move on somewhere else because, you know, the computers are going to do my job. That's not it. This is another tool for us to use in conjunction with what we currently do. This is another way to improve upon what we do moving forward into the next reappraisal. So you are correct. It's, it's another way of us looking at value. It's another way of us doing auditing. It's another valuation that will be pushed into our system that we can look at and say, well, you know, why, why is the value different between that value and our value? And then the appraisers will have to go and analyze that to figure it out. So approximately 2,500 neighborhoods to evaluate. You've heard us talk about this many times. The county is currently divided up into about 2,500 market areas, which we have often called neighborhoods, but more correctly defined as market areas. We will review all 2,500 of these for this next reappraisal. It is going to be quite a task. It's going to be very data-intensive and time-consuming to go through these. Because what this is, is it's truly a intensive market analysis to figure out what boundaries of neighborhoods are creating market differences. And if you live in a defined subdivision, that is a market area. And if you step out of that market area, you may have sales transaction that is not relevant to what's going on inside your subdivision because that is a market area. So those will be redefined all across the county to make sure that we are creating neighborhood boundaries that are truly comparable for whatever reason that the analysis may show us. So it, it does take time, but I've committed to the county manager that this will happen. She's asked me to make sure this happens, so I have committed to her that this will happen. So that's the next thing that we'll do and a benefit for equity to make sure that our neighborhoods are, boundaries are driven, are driven the way they should be from market data only. Moving forward, this could result in a data analyst, requesting the data analyst position to help with this data analyst, analysis. So that's, that could be an FY '24 request and a possibly of an additional salary of about $100,000. This is the piece that CAPE mentioned. This will be embedded in our website. This is a current vendor that is offering this product called Community. We also heard from the residents during the committee meetings is that they wanted to better understand what was going on in their neighborhoods, not across the county necessarily, in their neighborhoods. This tool will give every resident the ability to focus on whatever area of that map they want to. So again, if you live in a defined subdivision, you can- So, again, if you live in a defined subdivision, you can zoom in on your subdivision. And all the metrics then will tell you what this average sales price is, what the metrics as far as sales ratio study, if we did a reappraisal, where you're at and level of assessment. This will, we hope, will help residents have a more control over what they want to see and better understand as we move forward. Now, an example of that, when we came out of the '21 reappraisal, many people said, how could my neighborhood have went up 25%? Because they didn't have an understanding of it, because there was no tools available for them to have an understanding of it. Now, there will be. Can help them go to the website, focus on their neighborhoods, they will be able to see all the sales transactions that happens, and therefore, how we have arrived at a value for them. So, we're excited to be able to offer this to our residents.
Keith, no, that's, so that's not live now, but it will be at some point in the future?
Right. This is, this should be in with our rebuild of our website.
Okay.
Okay? So, we hope that by the first of the year, we may have this in production. So, to summarize, we're finally to the end. Outreach campaign to support contractor, that was $100,000 a year for that support contractor to come in and give us support as far as marketing, help us better understand how to reach our residents, how to educate them, things that we can do as far as social media and so on. Lobbying efforts to expand exemptions, no new cost. That's really, I think, your move to, if you want to implement some kind of lobbying effort for a change there. The appeals clinic with the Land of Sky Association of Realtors. We will use existing staff to support those realtors in that effort for FY23 and '24. Community ambassador to provide education on the appraisal process. Again, we will use existing staff at this time for '23 and '24. Real estate listing meller and MLS process, that's a $50,000 expense and the existing resources. Moving forward to '24, a $50,000 expense and an expansion possibly of a one full-time employee. Develop key metrics to trigger the increase in staff, we're currently doing that. We will currently have an FY24 request to budget for a full-time employee based on those metrics. Increase frequency of the property reappraisals. Again, at this time, we are not recommending that we move forward with the increase of frequencies of that. Short-term rentals, business listings, we will have a $12,000 expense in the meller of those listing forms to those who we have identified for FY23 and '24. Lobbying for the homestead exemption, no cost. Again, that can be driven by this board. Educate realtors about the data accuracy, no cost overlaps with the educational campaign for FY23 and '24. Enhance communications between the county assessment and permitting departments, no cost for FY23 or '24. One-stop assessment website for spatialist, the product we were just talking about. It's a $50,000 expense for, and the existing staff resources to support, and then $40,000 in FY24 moving forward. Implementation of the artificial intelligence software, $120,000 for FY23 and was budgeted for FY23, and then $120,000 for FY24. Reevaluate market areas, no change for FY23, FY24, possible request for one full-time employee at a $100,000 salary. So, I can take any other questions and I'll give Burnett. Burnett likes to have an opportunity to say something about the process. I say again, strategy and innovation has been a huge support to this process. They have been a partner from the very beginning and truly has helped us get to where we're at. And Burnett, you're welcome to say something.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I'm happy to help in any way that I can. So, thank you, you covered all the bases.
Any other questions?
I will just say that we do miss Burnett in the early childhood world, but it's obvious that his, he's doing more important work at the county level. It's great to see you here. Burnett helped shepherd a lot of the early childhood work in our first couple of years, and so.
Anything else?
Okay, so, yeah, appreciate, appreciate the presentation. Thanks for, thanks for all the updates from everybody. So, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot in here, there's a lot of recommendations here. Appreciate, you know, everybody digging into this and following up on it. I do have a couple of questions and, and comments. So, one of them, you know, and I guess I just kind of want to start off with like, sort of the, like, the really highest level question, I think, that's sort of hovered over this whole set of issues since we first started, you know, it kind of, kind of came onto our radar. And, you know, which is the, the question around, you know, is there, is there some tendency to over-assess modest homes and under-assess high-end homes when the revaluation process happens, right? There's a whole bunch of questions here, but that's really the kind of like the biggest, kind of most fundamental question. And all this stuff is, you know, very technical and complicated. But, I guess I just wanted to kind of come back, Keith, and kind of talk about that question a little bit. I mean, you mentioned, you referenced it earlier in your presentation and how, when thinking about that, that fundamental question, you know, there's not necessarily like any one thing, when we think about the next reval process that we will go through, there's not just any one thing that you do that to assure we're getting, we're getting this mass appraisal process to be as accurate as, as accurate as possible across the board as we can. It's a, it's a bunch of different things that, that need to be done to go into that. But, but I guess just, you know, you know, and so Lamar, I'd like to look at a couple of those slides that you showed. So, Keith, you showed, and we talked about these slides, so you showed a couple of slides at the last meeting of the ad hoc committee. So, I just wanted to spend a minute looking at these, because I think, before we dig into all the different kind of steps we can take and things that we can do, you know, I do want to kind of have as good of an understanding as possible about, like, do we think that there in the past, there has been some tendency around overvaluation and undervaluation happening in the appraisal process? I think the, you know, I really appreciate all the work that the ad hoc committee did and all these recommendations they brought forward. I think they give us a lot of things to work on, but I don't feel like that question was ever really directly answered, you know, from, from the committee. So, I think it's still a question the community is sort of asking itself, like, that's been asserted, but is it, you know, is it correct or is it, is it not correct? So, so I wanted to talk about it for just a minute. So, so this was one slide that, in, that your office prepared, right? And that was, you were used to talk with the ad hoc committee about. And, and then there's one other slide after this, could you show that one, Lamar? It'll come up in just a minute, you're, you're familiar with what it was. So, so, and then this is the other slide that was shown afterwards. So, it's these two different ways of looking at the valuations across the housing spectrum in the county. So, I guess, Keith, I just wanted to ask you to just share, kind of share your perspective on what the, what is the meaning of the two slides and what it means for the, kind of this high-level question of what do we learn from this when we think about, like, might there be some over-appraisal, overvaluation on the lower end and undervaluation on the higher end of the housing market that we can learn from? So, as we think about going into the future processes, we understand that and are thinking about, like, what are all the different things we can do to, to get the most accurate results we can?
Yep. So, I will quickly first answer your first question, and that is, there is not one button to push to say, we can fix it. There's a multiple places that we need to go to bring all this together, to make this happen. Now, there's, there's two ratios that we look at. One ratio looks at the data. What does the data look like as we move into the reappraisal? And what that means is that we look at the sales ratio before we made any changes to the parcel, okay? If there was changes to be made to it from maybe unpermitted data, we look at it before versus the value, and then we look at it after. After tells me what the level of assessment would be compared to the scheduled values. Now, what that means is that how is the appraisal methodology performing if you have correct data?
So, Lamar, could you put back up the, put back up the reappraisal, the first one, the reappraisal year ratio study? So, and I know this gets in the weeds super quick, but it's important and it's relevant to all these questions. So, 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 so talk about this first slide. How does this look at the data, what's included in the data that drives this graph and then, and then the second one?
Yeah. So, this graph is going to look at how is the appraisal methodology performing? And does it work? That's a simple question here, is the, if this methodology works? If you have a thousand-square-foot house, and I know you have a thousand-square-foot house, then I compare that to the methodology, and this is the result you get. Is that the data from the upper end to the lower end is very close, okay? Then if you look at it, we can go to the other one.
Okay, but before we leave it, so yeah, so this graph, you know, when we're looking at this graph, what's very attractive about it is that from the, from the more modest properties, all the way up to the higher-end properties, it shows this very consistent line, right? Of like, there, there seems to be, they're all close to their true value represented in the, the orange line, and a little bit below it, but very consistent across the value spectrum of housing. And, 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 and one of the differences between this and the one we're going to look at is that, that MLS process you talked about and other discovery processes, when we, when you, when your office learns that someone has made improvements to their property that we didn't previously know, this model incorporates the assumptions learned from that into the overall model, right?
That is correct.
So, once you embed those assumptions into the model, the model looks like it's working really...
Model works.
The model works really good.
Right.
But, the challenge is that, as you mentioned, like, the MLS information, only about 1% of the housing market goes on the market for sale each year. So, so the, so the percentage of homes where we have that fully updated information is only about 1% of the market. It doesn't apply to, you know, 95% of plus of the market.
That's correct, yes. If we go back to the other, if we could go back to the other... If we made no changes in the data, we, when the data comes through from a multiple listing service or when we qualify sales, this is a graph like you would see. And this is where it creates inequity, is when you're, when you have bad data and you're trying to assess bad data, then it creates bad data, okay? This is where inequities are born. And as you see from the earlier graph, is that if I had every house in this county listing correctly, that's the graph you would see, it'd be almost flat, okay? But, looking at this before the data is corrected, then you start seeing the inequities that get created. And that comes back to my earlier comment that...
I thought this was non-reappraisal year versus reappraisal, not just MLS, correct?
This, this is the 2021 reappraisal value versus the sales price. This is the reappraisal year, yes. You might be thinking, are you thinking of the J curve, the one? Okay. This one is looking at the sales ratios if we didn't do anything. So, again, I'll say what I said earlier, to, to take away these inequities that you see in this graph would be to get every homeowner in the county to respond to us and let's make sure we have the best data available. And then, the values become more equitable.
So, so, right, so if we had, you know, if we, if we lived in the world of perfect information, right? Then, we've got some pretty good evidence here that the model works, the model and the system works very well.
Yeah.
The challenge, of course, and it's nobody's, you know, and it's nobody's fault, really, is that we, we, we don't live in a world of perfect data, right? It's particularly not your office's fault, you know, we're going to make these additional efforts to get people to share information, but we, we have the information that we have. Your staff can't go into people's homes, they're basically just looking at the outside of people's properties and looking at market transaction data, right? So, we don't have perfect information about everything that's happening. But, with that said, you know, that is the basis for doing our mass, you know, revaluation process. And in this chart does seem to indicate, and I realize the type's really small here, so maybe not everyone can see it, but like the values on the left side of the bottom of the chart, those are for homes valued at $250,000 and below, where it kind of likes, the, kind of like, the graph pops up, and then it's like over, you know, over 650 is where there's kind of a decline on the right side of the homes. Those are homes valued at over $650,000 or thereabout. So, so this data does seem to indicate that with the information that we have and the process we go through, there, for the homes less than $250,000, there is, the market transaction data is indicating that there is a, there is an overvaluation of them compared to their, compared to the rest of the housing portfolio, right? And, and then on the, on the high end of the spectrum, I mean, it's a long, slow decline, but there does seem to be this decline indicating that the higher-valued real estate in the market is somewhat undervalued compared to the rest of the housing portfolio too. So, I guess that's, you know, that seems to be what it says, but I don't know, what are your, what comments would you have on that?
And I think I shared early on with this board that we, we identified about a 3% difference at that time between the moderate to low to the high. Is that the moderate to low was, could be a 3% higher than what the assessment was on the higher-end properties. However, I remind you that this is mass appraisal. 3% is success for us, okay? I don't think that I will ever stand before you and say it's zero, okay? We're going to have some fluctuations between the top and the bottom and the middle. It's just what's going to happen. But, what we can do is all the efforts to put forth to make it the best that we can make it and eliminate as much as the inequity, if you want to call it that, as we can through these new processes.
And Keith, just, if I'm remembering correctly, because it was about a year ago when we had this discussion about, wasn't it some of the ones that were overvalued? Didn't it tend to be the manufactured housing when you did that?
Actually, manufactured housing typically is undervalued, okay? And typically more today than maybe it ever has been. Manufactured housing is a very difficult task for us, because you have so many variations in quality and condition, it's very hard to identify them in the mass appraisal process. So, it is a little bit more of a struggle for us. So, there can be over-values and, but there's many undervalued too, yeah.
All right, well, I will, I will stop talking about numbers here for just a second. But, I just, I wanted to look at this, because I think that, I do think this is kind of the big-picture question that a lot of people in the community have. And so, I just, you know, this coming back to us, we've had a chance to kind of hear the ad hoc committee's report, think about the data that's presented. So, I, you know, my, I guess my takeaway on it is that there, there does seem to be some tendency in those ways. And I think there's a lot of good work being done, all the stuff you've described will be very helpful in preparation for the next revaluation process, so that when we're looking at this again after the next revaluation process, we don't see the same tendency, right? We're going to, we're going to want to see, we're going to want to get it as accurate as possible and certainly do everything we can to make sure we're not, you know, we're not overvaluing modest homes or undervaluing, you know, higher-end homes in the, in the community. I did have a couple of, I did have a couple of other kind of specific questions I wanted to ask about. One is going back to the short-term rental properties issue. So, I understand the points that were made around school of government blog, and I don't want to debate that here today, right? But, but, but the one, one opportunity that maybe it seems like there might be worth exploring in that space is that the, the work that your office is now doing to review the MLS listings in a really proactive and very comprehensive manner to look for, you know, are, are there substantial improvements that have been made that people haven't been paying their taxes on, should be paying it? That seems, that seems like a great step. The one other, like, kind of one other fairly unique process whereby, you know, when, you know, people choose to sell their property, they choose to put it on MLS. The other place that people can kind of, are choosing to kind of show what their properties, what they have is through like when people list their properties on short-term rental platforms, right? So, they kind of voluntarily choose to kind of show, like, here's what I have, hey, everybody, look how, look how great this is. So, my question is, even if you don't pursue kind of thinking about those properties being taxed in a different way than other single-family homes, is this an opportunity to potentially recognize substantial improvements that have been made in properties akin to what is happening with the MLS process that your office is pursuing now?
I, I do agree with you, I think it is. Because you have now an avenue of another window open, another door opened, that we can see what the improvements are, and that's really the only way that we have to find them. So, there is, you're right, there's other reasons of having the data that could be beneficial to us. However, I will say to you is that that is very time and sense, that is very time-intensive, because if we buy one extract of this data and you get 20,000 parcels, then somebody's got to look up each individual one of those, because we have no way of getting the data from these companies and just doing a direct comparison, it's a manual process. It's a manual process, so it's very, it would be very intensive. But is it a way, another avenue to correct the data? Yes, I will agree with that.
Well, you know, I'll just express support for looking at that. I mean, again, I mean, I think we've got this information showing like if we have perfect information, the model actually like seems to perform pretty well. So this does seem like an opportunity to continue kind of collecting real-world data on real improvements to properties. You know, no one needs to pay more than their fair share, but people do need to pay their fair share based on the, you know, the properties that they, they own. I guess the other question I wanted to just spend a minute on is around the appeals process. So it sounds like the, the, there's all these plans to kind of do outreach engagement in advance of the revow process to get people, raise awareness, get people aware of this. And in terms of, in terms of the appeal process itself, maybe you could talk just a little bit more about this. You said the realtors are willing to help with that. You know, this issue has gotten a lot of attention. Like I would not be surprised in the, the next time we go through this, we might see more, you know, more robust participation in the appeals process, right? And that's something like, as we've said all along, like we welcome that, like we want people, if you, if you, if you think you have some information that indicates there might be, you know, we didn't get it just right, come forward, share the information. That's a process, it's not a hostile process, it's a process we welcome. So I just, you know, I would want to do whatever we can to make that process as accessible as we can. A lot of the folks who own these more modest homes where, you know, that, that are of the concern, you know, are busy working people who, who this might seem like an intimidating process or they just don't learn about it because they're, you know, they're out there living their lives and not watching county commission meetings. So, so I'm just, I'm just, I just could, I guess we'd like to, like to hear your thoughts about how we, are, are we doing everything we can to make sure that process, like we're not presenting barriers to folks easily participating in, in that process? Or are there other things that we might be able to do?
I, I think we've, we've improved more and more over the years than we improve every year. But is there barriers? I don't think there's barriers other than knowledge. I think many of our property owners don't have the knowledge or don't want to enter the process because it could be a little intimidating to them. They don't know what to do, they don't know how to do it. So that's part of what this community engagement campaign's got to be about. And, and it has to be a huge focus on that, that we can reach as many residents as we can reach to help them better understand that process on how to do it, make it easy for them to do on our website. One reason for asking the realtors to volunteer is that we have now sort of a third party that residents can go and talk to. They're not talking to me, they shouldn't have to feel intimidated because I'm the tax guy. Give them someone else to talk to that maybe they can feel a little more comfortable with. So these are the things that I think that will help us improve. And I would hope that I can come back to you this time next year and show you that the success of this, that, that would, that is my desire.
And, and, you know, and I appreciate the realtors being willing to help on this, that's great. And with the discovery process kind of helping to educate home buyers and home sellers around why everyone needs to get the correct information out there. What have they, but you know, in light of the fact that there might be a lot of folks coming forward saying, yeah, I've, I've got questions, I'm interested in an appeal. I mean, how confident can we be that the realtors, who it sounds like they're doing this on kind of a volunteer basis, like will have the bandwidth to take that all on?
We had a great response from the realtors. We have, I think we have adequate amount of number of realtors who are willing to step up and do a volunteer service for this effort. So I was very pleased to see the amount of turnout than what we got from those. So I, we, we still have to look for more innovative ideas. And I hope as we bring on a marketing and engagement contractor that they can present us with some more new innovative ideas on how to reach these folks. But I truly have said all along is that people need to appeal. And people have come to me before and made comments to me and I've said, why didn't you appeal? And they're like, well, I didn't know I, I could, I didn't know how to do it, or I didn't know where to start. So we have to get that information out there in front of everybody to let them know that this is available and how to do it. And it's an easy process.
Just on that for a second, I just wonder if, as we think about this sort of through a information and service delivery approach, if, if we could pair that, there's appeals clinics with information about like screening for, are you eligible for any of the programs that exist to help, you know, whether because of your age or are you income eligible for the grant program? So that there's actually an integration to it. So someone comes in and it's like, okay, are you eligible for an appeal? Yep, let's pursue that. And what, you know, are you eligible for any of these other things? And then we're kind of providing that support throughout. I, I know that, I hear, I hear what you're saying and at the same time, like I have had conversations with constituents and neighbors for whom it's, it's, there are many barriers in the way, you know? And I think we just, to really, really dig into here, have to kind of be as intentional about this as we have been about like vaccine efforts, you know, that like we, we just kind of had to keep learning about, okay, what, what model will create the bridges for folks? So I, I guess as, you know, as we later head into the planning stage on this, would welcome county staff's perspective on ways to get all that in front of people sort of in, in one experience.
And let me mention to you is that that is going to be included. Is that I, I will have training sessions with the groups of realtors. I will help them understand how to not only appeal for a resident, but also be able to talk to that resident about exemptions that might be available to them. And right there, when they're talking to that resident, they can file the application for them. They can help them through the process. So it is going to be combined, it's going to be a combined effort to do it all. So it's not just about appeals. I think it has to be a combined effort because.
We tried a clinic once, we had both the collector side that can help with the exemptions as well. So we did try some community clinics at our libraries. And we did both, both offices were present to try that approach that you just mentioned.
All right. Other questions or comments this evening on this item?
I'll just say, well, thank you to staff and the ad hoc committee because I know this has been a tremendous amount of work. And I think it's, Chris McLaughlin, I believe, is the one with the School of Government that was addressing and speaking that it's often kind of two structural problems, issues. And it seems to me from what you're presenting, that you're working on addressing both of those, one being the appeals process that we're talking about and the other being keeping the assessment close to that market value for all properties across the spectrum. So I look forward to continuing as we learn from this process and continue to improve upon this as we go forward.
Thank you.
Yes, that's a lot of information there, hour and 30 minutes, but it was good. But Keith, you're talking here, getting ready for 2024. What about staffing up to then? Or would it speed it up? I mean, whenever we get into that year reappraisal there next year, could we speed it up? Maybe amending the budget somehow to get someone in there now trained to help speed it up?
Well, I, I think that's always a possibility. You know, if you're looking for, let's say the idea that Chairman Newman had on the short-term rentals, if we buy the data and you're looking at, starting to look at these and capture the improvement data from that, then can you start on that immediately? Sure, you can do that. Do we currently have the bandwidth within our organ, our department to pull one person out and just have them do that? No. That's, that's why you saw it in the presentation as an ask for FY24. But to answer your question, yes, we can start it anytime.
And I think what I'm saying is, what we're all talking about is let's don't come in next year and think still we haven't went through all the barriers, that we've got a straighter line on everything of being prepared a little sooner than what we was this year or four years ago.
Yeah, so there's, there, there's a lot of things that we can do and there's a lot of efforts I hope you saw from the presentation tonight that we're going to put forth. Some can, cannot start immediately. We do not have the staff to pull out to just focus on one project. You know, 10 appraisers that we do 130,000 parcels in the county and take care of all those transactions. So we have to discuss that with budget and with our county manager moving forward on how we approach that.
Would that be something we'd want to do? I mean, in the next meeting or a couple of meetings to be ready for next year?
I, I think we should have, I mean, I think this, these are, you know, there's a lot in here. There's a lot of different specific recommendations. Some are small, some are bigger, you know, financially. But I, I think this is a good discussion and I, I think it would be, you know, we're all, and this is all just kind of sinking into, we're kind of having questions, hearing answers, letting it sink in. I think we should have a follow-up discussion on this. I think, you know, I think that would be very helpful, yeah.
I'm glad you said that, Brownie. I, for me, this is, you know, what I think is probably the first of, a series of conversations that we're going to have about this. This is a lot of information, a lot to process, a lot to dig in on, to make sure that we're getting it right as we're doing it. And I certainly do appreciate that there's some short-term options that I think we can, you know, start to make some immediate decisions on, but also some longer-term ones as well. And I appreciate what you've continued to say, Keith, is that we have to be creative in terms of how we're looking at this and it's not a one-size-fits-all. I also appreciate the work that you and your folks have done assigning costs to each of these and making some particular recommendations. I know one of the things that I've continued to hear is we should have a reappraisal more often and looking at that cost in and of itself, I think, is very telling to many of the groups that have reached out saying that that should be at the top of our list, that that's, that's quite expensive. When there's other things that we can do to probably get an end result that's in the same direction that we want to head, that doesn't cost quite as much. So thank you for long and short term and solutions.
You're welcome.
Okay. One of the areas, Keith, before you leave, this is great work and all. But going forward, one of the areas I'd like to see us look at when we talk about equity is how we do the foreclosures. Because I've seen some situations in the past, especially when I was working in banking, that didn't appear to me to be quite kosher. But I'll, we'll get together on that, I'll have some more questions.
Yeah, and that, that's the collector. And the county manager can have a conversation with Jennifer Pike about that. That's not on the assessment side.
Right.
That's a question for the collector.
All right, Keith, thank you. Appreciate everyone being here tonight who's been working on this. And so thank you all for your contributions to this important conversation. All right, next item on the agenda, under new business, budget amendment for justice services grant awards and update. John Hudson is here to present this item.
Good evening.
Good evening. We have two budget amendments to accept grant awards. The OJP Community Violence Initiative is a three-year grant in the amount of $1,496,756. This does not require a match. This request asks to establish a grant manager position funded by the grant to support the work by this grant. The Bureau of Justice Affairs has awarded $750,000 for a four-year grant to sustain Buncombe County's Adult Drug Court, Veterans Court, and Sobriety Court initiatives and to establish a full-time clinician position. Tiffany is here with additional information about these grants.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to present kind of some good news and give you kind of an update about the programs that we're providing services for and the enhancements and expansions we plan to do with the programs in order to better serve those in the community. So just a quick overview, we'll talk about the purpose and then I'll break down each specific grant and the work and programs that it relates to, including background objectives, the actual award amount, and then the actual request for board action that John previously stated. So again, we received two grants from the Department of Justice, one related to our treatment courts and the other related to our Community Safety and Violence Prevention Initiative. This work both aligns with our 2025 strategic plan and the Racial Equity Action Plan, specifically in the space of resident well-being, where all residents are safe, healthy, and engaged in the community. Specifically looking at increasing the number of successful graduates and reducing the crime rate, including the violence and property crimes within our county. And when it comes to our racial action, racial equity action plan, we are striving to improve justice outcomes for the most impacted communities, including providing trauma-informed responses as well as development and implementation of a plan to reduce community violence. So when we look at our treatment court enhancement grant, that was the Bureau of Justice grant. Historically, we have had three treatment courts in Buncombe County that are criminal justices involved and they're recovery-based interventions for folks that are high-risk and high-needs. They have a history of substance addiction and incarceration. And so the goal is to use kind of court enforcement and recovery simultaneously to offer a path to recovery. Therefore, our teams include justice services, probation judges, the DA representation from the public defender's office, and treatment providers along with, in accordance to best practices. The previous grant we needed to, we used to fund the programs themselves and it was specifically for Adult Drug Treatment Court and Veterans Treatment Court. In our last budget cycle, we knew the grant was ending and so, and the budget for this year, we were able to sustain the programs by creating a full-time position that is operating Veterans Treatment Court. So this enhancement grant, well, some background about, sorry, what we've done this past cycle for the last grant. We've had 56 people complete our program. We've had only a 24% recidivism rate and that's comparing it to the national average. In terms of our sobriety court, we've had 80 participants complete since 2016. We have a 69% success rate compared to the national average and a 16% recidivism rate. Our enhancement to the court will include more recovery supports and getting people into treatment real-time and working in coordination with the clinician and a peer support across all three services. The clinician will be able to do assessments and prevent or reduce the length of time that it takes to get screened into our treatment courts. The clinician will also be able to provide evidence-based programming for women and black males. We were looking at our disparity, disparities in our programs and noticed that women and black males took longer to complete the programs. So the grant award is $750,000. We are doing in-kind donation, including our supervision of, of services and supports. Again, it's a full-time clinician, a contracted peer support specialist. We have been partnering with Western Carolina, who is providing evaluation. They historically have evaluated two of our courts. And so the partnership includes now evaluating all three of our courts to include the outcome data that I mentioned, some of the other work that Dr. Jamie Vaskey has done is our equity analysis and our recidivism rate. And we also implement evidence-based programming to work with underrepresented groups. And there is no obligation to fund at the end of this grant award. The next grant that we were awarded is our Community Safety and Violence Prevention. And it builds on our work through the Safety and Justice Challenge. It aligns with the $1 million award that you all awarded us for the fiscal recovery funds. And our overarching goal again is to prevent and reduce community violence by implementing comprehensive, evidence-based, and community-led approaches to trauma-informed violence intervention and prevention. So this is kind of some background of the why. This is a 10-year review that Asheville Police Department put together last year during a conference we held on the ground floor, looking at addressing racial disparities and victimization. And this kind of heat map to the left speaks to the, the need. And you can see the denser, redder, denser colors are where we see community violence. And so the staffing pattern mod, will model where we see community violence happening the most. About a third of violent crime victims are black, which is disproportionately to the population of 11%. There has been an increase for victims since, excuse me, 2010 to 2020. And being, excuse me, victim of violent crime is greater for black residents. And you can see the trend lines on the right side that shows you the comparison from 2010 to 2022. see the trend lines on the right side that shows you the comparison from 2010 to 2022, realizing that our violent crime has increased, but our population is increasing as well. But it's the disproportionate impact that we're looking at in terms of victimization, which is the lower slide, that has kind of remained still about 33%. But our goal is to ultimately reduce victimization. So this is the current landscape. We have been building across this work. We initially came and, to you all, in a RFP to use our Safety and Justice Challenge funds to request some initial startup programming that included partnerships with Spark, and my daddy taught me that, and Mmosia, and Resources for Resiliency. And we also did some community, some initial strategic community planning. That funding will end in 2023. We did some research in that comprehensive model, looking at best practices on violent interruption models, and we came and requested ARPA funds to implement the violent interruption models. In order to do all this work, we also recognize the need to have someone to coordinate and manage it. So our request to DOJ was a grants manager position to continue the work that we started in Safety and Justice Challenge. The DOJ grant requires us to do ongoing and continuous strategic planning. So now that we have a draft of this comprehensive plan, it's based for and capacity for implementation of the plan. And the information below just looks at when we expect for the funds to, to end. So just to get a clear, like, landscape of what each funding is, what each source is funding, for the fiscal recovery funds, we're looking specifically at using that fund to fund our CASM, which is the Training and Technical Assistance, to do the Community Violence Interruption Model. We'll use the funding to fund the project manager that will supervise, the community health workers that are going out into communities, program support to, to support the program, and then a researcher to look at the work that we're doing and be able to evaluate it and provide us with recommendations and feedback based on the data that we're collecting, both quantitative and qualitative. And the OJP award, that's a county grants manager that will manage the program and the finances and the budget. It continues the work of the SJC program, and it will add three additional community health workers to the violence interruption model. We will be issuing a RFP for a community partner to operate the violence interruption model. And lastly, the OJP award requires us to do ongoing community co-facilitation to implement the Buncombe County Violence Prevention and Safety Plan. So in summary, it's about $1.5 million with no match required between October of 2022 and September of 2025. The position that I mentioned enhances the work of our current contractors that are doing a lot of capacity building, mentorship, job placement, and working in communities to address kind of intergenerational relationships and building community. So it's not necessarily an evidence-based violence prevention model, but it's adding to the work that the violence intervention model will do. And again, the multi-sector coalition to implement the plan, there will be no county obligation at the end of this award. And, John, you want to come back? Is there any questions specific to the work that we're doing?
I have one. You know, when I see the money that we're spending and the grants we're getting, but one of the big concerns I have, and I've watched it really increase just in the time I've been on the commission, is the deaths of young African-American men in the community. What are we doing to solve that? You know, I don't, you know, we do a good job of talking about it, but I still see it happening. And if you look, and I don't, I can't say it for sure, but if we get, look at the murders we've had in Buncombe County in the last few years, I'm sure the majority are black men, young black men. And that's got, we've got to do something about it. That really concerns me.
And I think from our perspective, this is Buncombe County's first time doing this type of initiative. We are learning from other places, like New Hanover is actually the first county, I believe in Buncombe, to do this violence interruption model. So we're hoping that we could learn from other communities. It's also about building capacity. We do have staff that are supporting mothers who have lost their children to gun violence, and I believe they hosted a community event or a forum. So it's really about giving support to community and providing capacity and capacity building, and that's what we're trying to do in this grant endeavor, and I'm hoping with the partnership and the participatory research, we can come back to you and say, okay, this is the effort that we've did, and this is the outcomes that we see.
Good, I hope so, because, you know, we're not Chicago or other places. We're small enough to seem like we can get our arms around it and solve it. But thanks, yeah, for the work you're doing.
All right, any other questions or comments? Or a motion?
To approve the budget amendment.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the budget amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and is there a motion to approve acceptance of the two DOJ grants and the approval for the two full-time equivalent grant funded positions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, commissioners, we have a couple, we have one board appointment to make on the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. And we have two applicants for the position.
I put Melina Arrowood.
Okay, why don't we just go down and we'll just, there's two, there's two people that both sound very qualified. So Terry, what's your preference?
Patricia Killian.
Melina Arrowood.
Patricia Killian.
I think Patricia got four. All right, all right, thanks, everybody, and I appreciate people willing to serve on this committee. We've got a couple of announcements.
Before you do that, Chairman Newman, can I just address a few things with board appointments? I know the last time we were supposed to communicate about the historic resource commissions, I know we sent out an email and you said you wanted to talk about it. I think they recommended one person and didn't recommend another person. It was a couple vacancies. We can discuss it later and put it on the agenda, but you said that you would like to discuss it with the board.
So there's a couple of vacancies, right?
Correct.
And how many applicants do we have?
It's two, it's two applicants currently. Since then, we have had somebody else resign, so there's three vacancies now, but there were two at the time that this was sent out.
Oh, okay, we'll come back to this.
So it just, and we can discuss it later, but I just want to make sure that I-
So we need some more people to apply.
We do, but I don't know if you want to appoint one of the people that was recommended, or we can wait to the next meeting to address it, and y'all can have a chance to look over it again?
Why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll make a decision about making an initial appointment, and if there's anything we can do to get the word out about needing more folks to apply for this committee that has a lot of power, what you can do with your house. We need them to apply.
Say that again. I'm sorry, we had two openings on it now.
We have three now, we have three vacancies, we have two people that applied, two applicants, one they recommend, one that they didn't. So just wanted, and it was the email sent out, and Chairman Newman said he would like to discuss it at the next meeting, but we can hold off and just put it on the-
I can't remember actually what we were going to discuss, I mean, we need more people to apply though, right? So we have a pool of people to choose from.
And then we can interview them.
And I think we want to interview folks, this is, it is a, it is a committee with a lot of power, you know, over like what you can do with your property and protecting historic, you know, architecture, so it's an important one. So if anybody knows, anybody interested in this stuff, tell them to get in there.
And one last, Board Strategic Partnership Grants Committee, just want to make sure y'all read the email that Rachel Nygaard sent about discussing how we want to handle appointments now, since districts are changing, and a lot of the people are going to be out of the district that they were initially appointed in, so.
Yeah, and so this is actually relevant to the appointment we just made, right? Because actually, neither of these applicants live in the supposed district that they're supposed to live in, right? So can you kind of refresh our memory? I mean, Rachel's recommendation is that that's, we seek geographic diversity, but that we not be kind of tied strictly to districts.
Correct.
Is that a policy change that we need to, like, affirm in order to make this kind of appointment?
We would have that on the agenda for November 1st, to talk through what does that look like for strategic partnerships. We can broaden that for all boards and commission on that November 1st, but we were bringing that back in as an item for action in November.
That sounds like a good discussion to have. Michael, would it be permissible, I mean, I'm just, feel free to speak up if anybody disagrees, but I think we want to go ahead and make this appointment tonight, even though neither of them is from the district, can we say, you know, we're aware of the general guideline, but we are voting to affirm Patricia Killian for this appointment at this time, with the understanding we're going to further revisit that policy going forward?
And I'm not sure if that specific commission required living in specific districts.
Says it does.
It does.
To make exceptions?
Yes.
Is everybody comfortable with moving ahead with Patricia's appointment? And then we'll, we'll talk about the policy in more detail.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lamar. All right. On November 1st at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On November 1st at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold the regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We're adjourned.